We will call this meeting of the Rules and Open Government Committee to order at 2:00. Let's have a roll call.
Davis.
Here.
Jimenez.
Present.
Kemi.
Here.
Foley.
Here.
Cohen.
Here.
You have a call.
All right, we will start by reviewing the agenda for next week's council meeting on October 17. Meeting is listed as 9:30 closed session, 1:30 open session. Consent starts on page six. All right, page six, seven, eight, nine, 10, and 11. Those are, oh, and consent ends on 12. All right, section three, we have city managers annual report, a deferral on section, on item 3.4, and Housing Department performance measure, item 3.5. Then we have section four, community outreach regarding street closures for events. Section five, DOT grant for East San Jose corridor, acquisition of property on Stockton Avenue. Nothing in seven and eight, seven, nothing in six and seven. In section eight, we have authorization to apply for HUD funding opportunity. Actions related to emergency interim housing. And a quick build shelter, shelter and housing cost benefit analysis for Villa del Oro. Nothing in nine. In section 10, we have land use consent for items. And that's the agenda. Those will be heard immediately after the regular consent. So let's go to public comment on the agenda for the 17th.
Blair.
Hi, Blair Beakman. Happy, happy day. To speak to item 2.12 is the status report of Measure T, disaster preparedness, work plans and implementation updates. There's nothing listed exactly what the updates and work plans can be at this time for upcoming Measure T items. Will that be on the memo consent calendar, you know, when it comes to the whole city council? And if not, if can it be, if I was to call Public Works or city council person, can they offer help in, in direction where I can get that sort of information? With that said, the same with, you had an item on your October 3 city council meeting, 2.11, I think, or so, about an app, a tech app that can help with, it was talked about in terms of police helping make better decisions how, when police make police stops.
All right, let's keep it to the agenda on the 17th, Blair, please. Thank you.
Oh, okay. Well, yeah, I wanted to speak on that item about overall issues of, I hope, council, you can be able to answer questions by call and write to yourselves and ask. That's basically what I meant to say at this time. So I hope you can work on that. We can work on it together. Thank you.
Back to the committee.
All right, any comments or motion?
Move approval.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Let's vote on the agenda.
Oh, with the ad sheet.
Oh, yes, I guess I missed the ad sheet, sorry. With the, yes, with the ad sheet.
Okay, I'll approve it with the ad sheet.
If I must.
Commenting about you being.
All right, the motion carries 5-0. Now we'll move on to our preview of the agenda on October 24. We do have an evening session as part of it, 9:30 closed, 1:30 regular session, 6:00 p.m. evening session. Consent starts on page six, continues on page seven, eight, and nine. Section three, we have an retirement service interim audit report. And purchase orders for Resendan and Sprig. Section four, our receipt, receipt of the grant for retail theft prevention. Section six, long-term renewable energy agreement, Climate Smart semi-annual report. Section eight, approval issuance of multifamily housing financing of Dry Creek Crossing project. And amending Title V immunity code. And then for land use, we have consent. Oh, there is no evening session, I suppose.
It says recommended cancellation.
Oh, okay. Yeah, it says recommended cancellation. I need to read these ahead of time. Thank you. We'll go to public comment then.
Blair.
Hi, Blair Beakman. You have three items on surveillance tech issues, interestingly. One is about asking for, for new dollars for military equipment purchases for a few items. One is about technology that's for over $500,000 one year and, and in following years, about digital forensic tools, it's called. And then you have a final item that, I guess, to talk about the first two items, I'm concerned that, oh, the third item is about community connections, corrections, organized retail theft, theft prevention grant program funding, over $8 million, 8.5 million. That's a lot. And so I think I'll first talk about that issue. It's my feeling that, you know, we hit our, the peak of that sort of thing happening a few years ago. And it was in the fall of 2021 or '22, maybe. And you guys banded together, not just as San Jose, but as Bay Area cities, to say, you know, this is enough. Federal dollars came in, new programs were developed. I think it really made a considerable difference. And now you're going to want to build on that for this sort of program. I hope you realize that at the time of that program, that, you know, you got a lot of new federal funding dollars for ALPR things, for instance. I hope you realize you had already a lot of surveillance tech already in place doing its job. And it was just simply a matter that you had to kind of organize thinking how to use that tech for the applications needed. And that, that's, I really think that was a part of the process, that I hope can, you can take those lessons to heart. And that we don't have to be necessarily receiving all these new dollars and new funding things to basically practice good smarts and talking intelligently and communicating more than tech. Thanks.
Back to the committee.
Move approval.
Second.
All right, there's no comment, so let's move to vote. Motion carries 5-0. That brings us to our rules consent calendar. Let's go to public comment first.
Blair.
Hi, Blair Beakman. I had a letter in public record that was important to me. Thank you. There's a monthly report, activities report from the auditor. Tenant protection ordinance issue about, is an audit item that may be of interest to people. And you're dealing with a street light and traffic signal light issues also upcoming. That's interesting. There's also, you talk about the city managers, well, actually upcoming PISPIS items that are going to be rescheduled. One is language accessibility. And the other item is about police recruitment. I'm sorry, the police, I mean, the language accessibility is being put off from December 7. On the memo, you very nicely say it will be returning February 15, 2024. So thank you. I think that's a great, great item to be working on. So I'll be interested in that. But the idea is a quarterly police report that was supposed to be presented November 16. It does not have a date that will, it will be brought back for public presentation. That I, you know, it really has to be. And I think it can be. And it's the sort of issues that I think we want to be accessible and understandable about our police practices, that I hope you will have a date soon that can describe to people what to expect. You know, the issues of, you know, the tech and, and surveillance tech, that, that's a little bit more difficult to learn how to talk about openly, that I hope we can. And I really want to help in that process, too. But it's with the ideas of police recruiting that should be fairly easy to, to make it an open, assessable process, that, good luck in how to do that. And, yeah, hopefully see a date of that police recruitment thing soon. And that can incorporate more of the ideas of reimagine and help in human services future. Thank you.
Back to the committee.
All right, is there a motion to approve the five items on consent?
Move approval of consent.
Second.
All right, let's vote.
Second.
Motion carries 5-0. All right, that brings us to our policy item today. We have a request for an audit of the San Jose Animal Care and Services. Vice Mayor Kemi, do you want to introduce this?
Yes, many, we've received many concerns from the community regarding the San Jose Animal Care and Services. And I know that it has been in transition and there are some new improvements that have been implemented. But there are community members who are concerned. And we recognize that the auditor does have a full platter already. But one of the things that we find is that this is a high priority. So we are respectfully requesting that the city auditor prioritize an audit of the animal care services. And, and take a look at, you know, having recommendations to improve delivery of services with transparency and accountability. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Vice Mayor. Now let's go to public comment.
I'm going to call the in-person speakers first. When I call your name, if you can come down and line up on the stairs, the first person down here can go directly to the podium. I have Karen, Deena, Kay, and Kelsey.
My name is Karen Blair. I am a concerned citizen and a volunteer with Scritch Kittens. Mahatma Gandhi once said, "The greatness of a nation and moral, and its moral," excuse me, "its moral progress can be judged by the way its animals are treated." We have lost our moral compass and the animals are suffering for it. Those animals in the care of the San Jose Animal Care Services have no voice to voice the conditions that they are in. We must be that voice. We must show them that we care, that they matter, and that we can and will be the better part of humanity. I urge you to vote yes for the audit for the San Jose Animal Care Services. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Hello. My name is Dinah. I'm a member of the stakeholders group. And I appreciate the volume of response with regards to the request of the audit and that the recognition of animal services as a priority. I don't believe that an audit can repair relationships. And I'm not convinced that this is the correct approach. And would instead request that you consider a third-party facilitator and mediator, which could be something that would not have to disrupt the audit plan. And would also have a bigger opportunity for involvement, engagement with the community and stakeholders. And I would also like to add a note of concern that in the audit request, it seems to be attributing the number of animals coming into the shelter due to pandemic pet returns. That is not the case. The majority of the animals coming into the shelter are being brought in as strays, and they are not fixed. Any animals adopted out by rescue groups or shelters or other reputable agencies would have been fixed before being adopted. These animals are a result of a lack of spay and neuter, as well as the current housing and economic issues. And to characterize this as people not committed to keeping their pets does a great disrespect to those pet owners. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker. I'm going to call three more names. I have Lynn, Andrea, and Navi.
Hello, my name is Kay Blom. Been here before, earlier in the spring. This is McIntosh, she's my favorite. I just want to say that I just urge you to vote yes for the audit. Animals are still dying out at the shelter, so please, just vote yes. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
My name is Kelsey, and I live in D9. I want to urge this committee to approve moving forward with an audit of the San Jose Animal Care Services. What is happening behind closed doors needs to be brought into the light. Changes need to be made to ensure that animals in the city's care are not being neglected. Changes need to be made to ensure proper medical care is being given to the animals. Horrific stories of what is happening at the shelter to the animals have surfaced. These stories will not stop until changes are made. The policies and procedures need to be followed, and there needs to be accountability of the management at the shelter to city staff and the community. An audit will provide the city with the clarity and tools needed to ensure the shelter is operating in a manner that will restore its no-kill status. The audit needs to move forward quickly to ensure life-saving, necessary changes happen quickly. I urge you to vote yes to a comprehensive and expedient audit of the shelter. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Hello, my name is Lynn. I'm a longtime volunteer at the San Jose Animal Care Center and also a member of the stakeholders group. The shelter is in crisis and has been in crisis for years with no public action plan created to alleviate the suffering of the animals. Simply said, too many animals are dying while in care. Volunteers and staff that have tried to improve conditions are ignored or retaliated against, and some have been fired. Therefore, frustration is growing and issues are bubbling up into the public realm via social media and traditional media. I support an independent audit to understand and analyze the current situation in depth. I do ask that the audit take into account the stakeholders and community concerns that have been ignored for years. Transparency, communication, and leadership, which have been missing, are essential to move forwards. Therefore, I urge you to vote yes to the audit. Thank you for your time.
I'm going to call four more names. I have Jennifer, Luanne, Cassidy, and another Jennifer.
My name is Jennifer Flick. Thank you to the committee staff and members. I appreciate your time and the opportunity to speak. I'm a volunteer at the Animal Care Center. I also run a rescue. I also run a transport group. I stood here in the spring and spoke to the city council about concerns regarding the shelter and the retaliation towards a volunteer. I spoke of the live release rate dropping and the poor care of the animals. Having been meeting with shelter, staff, management for almost a year prior, and now attending stakeholder meetings for the past eight months, I'm here again. This time, I will simply state the words that keep coming up from the line-level staff at the shelter and the volunteers, as well as local rescue representatives and community members. Mismanagement, ineptitude, irresponsibility, inefficiency, neglect, dysfunctional, retaliation, cliques, favorites, deterioration, turnover, callouts, warehousing, death and suffering, failure to implement protocols, failure to enforce policies, lack of leadership, lack of communication, transparency, collaboration, and trust. These last four especially have been brought up repeatedly over the past eight months at the city-led stakeholder meetings and have been agreed to be some of the biggest concerns at the shelter. Yet here I am again. The live release rate has dropped another five points since this spring. The percentage rate of animals dying in their kennel tripled. The percentage tripled over prior years. Line-level staff are terrified to report concerns for fear of retaliation. They call me. Many of these failures are shown vividly in the recent case of Lola, where the shelter and a shelter vet state that they're trying to find rescue for her, and the medical director kills Lola while the rescues on her way to pick her up. I urge this committee to vote yes to an audit.
Thank you. I've called all of the in-person speaker cards. If you didn't hear your name and you'd like to come down and speak, please. And if not, we'll go online.
Caller with last four digits, 0319.
Hello, I don't know if you can hear me. This is Tina Morrell. I live in the Vendome neighborhood in District 3. And I wanted to speak out, first, thank you for your time. I wanted to speak out in favor of doing an audit, but with a couple caveats. First, when I looked at the previous audit, the one I found was from 2009, it seemed to be primarily focused on making sure that fees were paid, that money was, money that was owed or could be owed was going to be given back to the city of San Jose. I think the audit needs to include best practices, maybe from other shelters. It, it needs to be more than just, how are we going to see the taxpayers yet again? And at the same time, having all of these service issues. So I wanted to voice my support. Absolutely, let's do an audit, but let's make sure that we're auditing the right thing. Second, while we're doing the audit, services need to, they need to improve. So it's not like we should be dropping everything just so we get the audit. And then, then, once we have the audit results, then we can start implementing changes or improvements. Both need to happen in tandem. Thank you very much.
Megan.
Hi, my name is Megan Moylanen. I'm here on behalf of Lola as well. I am here to support a audit, but I also encourage the people in power in this room to listen to the people who are here, who've taken our time out of our day, and who continue to take our time to transport the animals that are in your care, to rescue the animals that are in your care, to reach out to community members. We fight really hard, and we do the work that I really want to say, like, you guys should be doing. And it's all on our own time. And Lola, if you don't know, as the speaker before shared, was killed, euthanized as a shelter, I'm sorry, a rescue volunteer, was 15 minutes away. So we really ask for, for you to listen to us and just, you know, please take, take a look at the audit, but please also speak to everybody who's in the room today, get their numbers, have a phone call with them. We know a lot, and we really want to help. Thank you.
Liz.
Hi, this is Liz Holtz. I'm a rescue TNR volunteer and foster. I'm also part of the stakeholders group, as well as the Companion and Community Animal Project group. We have been meeting with the shelters for quite some time. Our group originally brought up the idea of an audit last December. And I think an audit is a good idea. I think the primary target for that audit really to be the data collection and management at the shelter. The current status of the database and the collected data is bad. I mean, you know, garbage in, garbage out. You don't know how many animals are being turned away on a regular basis. For every sick or injured animal that comes into the shelter, there's at least five, 10, 15 that are turned away, that are stray animals. People are not being. People are not being, you know, having lost animals posted, where they can be reunited with their families. It is just a mess. And all of the grants, proposals, your community's needs are all based on that data. So the biggest thing is the data needs to get cleaned up. One of the biggest things that is constantly brought up is the lack of communication with the shelter. So that's also something that can be solved with good technology, good databases, and good, you know, you know, things. So thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Jennifer? Jennifer, go ahead and unmute, please.
Sorry, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, good afternoon. My name is Jennifer Rysig and I live in District 6. I've been following the declining conditions at the San Jose Shelter for some time. It's extremely disturbing that we have to read story after story of animals in the shelter's care that resulted in unnecessary deaths and negligent medical care that could have been prevented. Stories like Linguini, Cowgirl, James, Betty, Archer, Romeo, and Lola are devastating, and they deserve so much more from their caregivers. When you look at the data on the shelter's dashboard, it shows a lack of partnership between the shelter and the local animal rescues. This partnership is essential to the survival and proper care of tens of thousands of innocent animals. Currently, the euthanasia rate is outpacing the live release rate to local rescues, and the cat death rate in our, in the month of August, quadrupled compared to last year. Our city, a city of our size, cannot allow these statistics to continue and to serve the community with fidelity. This fractured partnership needs to be repaired immediately for more animals, or more animals will continue to suffer. I was trying to be there today, but we missed it because you guys went so fast, but I was going to bring my students with me, and I have a few of them with me. And we are writing, they were writing letters to the city to express their concern of the dire situation. As young adults, they understand that it's completely unacceptable, and they feel compelled to speak up. Why is it as we as adults, we make excuses for problems in society instead of finding realistic solutions? You must vote yes on the shelter, audit for the shelter. What type of society have we become if we're incapable of helping the ones who are dependent on us? Thank you for your time.
Navi?
Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Hi, my name's Naveen Granado. I'm 17, and my family and I live in District 7. And I strongly urge you, the agreement, to do the audit. We must vote yes. Me and my family own five cats, four of them coming from the shelter. When we went to the shelter, they seemed like they were adopting out cats and dogs perfectly fine. I interviewed the shelter last year for your Juvenus Journalism class. I was able to see behind the scenes and everything seemed fine. But last year and this year alone, you can see the status of the shelter has changed drastically. My mother, before adopting our fifth cat, saw a kitten on the adoption floor whose stitches had come undone, and this poor kitten's guts were hanging out. And this isn't just about cats. Another family member adopted a dog, and that was skinny and frail. They didn't tell us that anything was wrong with him. She took him to the vet, we tried to get it figured out, but they took her, they took Chico away from him because of neglect and mistreatment. She spent well over thousands of dollars trying to care for an animal she didn't know what was wrong with. But despite all of that, she loved him and didn't treat him any differently. Linguini, Cowgirl, James, Betty, Archer, Romeo, Lola, and Chico didn't deserve the treatment, if, received the treatment, and if they got any. Animals advocate for themselves in a language we don't know how to speak or understand. It's our job to make sure their needs are met, as we would for our kids. These four babies deserve more than what they're receiving. So again, I strongly urge you to vote yes for this audit. Thank you for your time.
Back to the committee.
Thank you. Thank you to all the members of the public who spoke. Councilmember Davis, did you want to start?
Did Vice Mayor?
Oh, oh, yeah, yeah, she already, yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you. I have some questions for you both, Joe and Matt, if you want to come down. Thank you. Please refresh my memory. Was, didn't we have an external audit of Animal Care and Services relatively recently?
Yes, we received an audit in 2022 from the Matties Fund that came up with about 85 recommendations that we're in the process of implementing, and we'll be reporting back to city council at the NSC Committee with the Annual Report about the status of those recommendation implementations.
When, when will that be coming?
In December, in December.
December. Okay, thank you. I appreciate that. And then, Joe, if, are you planning to start this before that report comes back to us?
So right now, my thinking would, it would start around that same time. So I have some projects that are wrapping up over the next few months in a team. This is a big, Body Works would be a big team, so I'd need, need the folks that are freeing up. So my assumption it would probably starting in December. They're really kind of ramping up after the, after the calendar year.
Okay. And it would, I'm guessing it would pick up where that audit left off?
That would be my intent, is to kind of build on the work that's, that's already been done, yeah.
Okay, and I was looking at your, so you had an update of your work plan in the, on the consent calendar, and I was looking at it. You have, you do have quite a few items in process, and then it, I'm guessing, so prioritizing this would be for assignments not yet started that are not biannual or annual reports that you have to do.
Correct.
So what would be falling off the, what would be falling off the schedule?
So right now, I would suggest deferring the traffic signal and streetlight maintenance audit until, to the following fiscal year. For, it would be added for, taken off this year's work plan, added next year.
Okay, and then on, that looks like that's the, that's number 17. In terms of 18 through 22, are those also going to be, were you planning to still be able to do those this fiscal year? Or at least start them, or what do you think?
Yeah, so my, my, my current thinking is to, that we won't be able to start all of those, but, but the, we will be, after the new year, when we wrap up some other projects, we'll be able to start at least two more of those in addition to the animals and the animal care audit. So we'd have a couple at the end. I always have a little bit of a cushion at the end, just in case, you know, for some, whatever reason, a project we end up not doing. And so we'd have a couple at the, toward the end that we wouldn't be starting, that we'd be carrying forward, and we'd also add back the streetlights, and that would be, those would be the top ones for the following fiscal year.
Okay, so you'll come back to us in December and talk about kind of what your next six months looks like?
Well, I come back every, every month, and so I'll, I'll try to signal what's kind of coming up next, over time.
So I'd just like to ask then the administration to put, instead of putting Joe's work plan for December on consent, to have it as a discussion item for, for rules in December so that we can talk about what's coming up, and then maybe we can have a discussion about reprioritizing the items that are left for the year. And, okay, thank you for that. Matt, I did want to ask, the, the public comment actually talked a lot about the relationships, and I'm assuming that's with volunteer groups, but it did also sound like there might be some management issues. I heard the word cliques, and sounds like people kind of in favor and out of favor. Can you talk a little bit about the culture that's at Animal Care Services?
Thanks for that question. It's, the environment there is, especially over this last summer, has been very challenging with the amount of animals. It's been a very stressful environment on both the animals and the people that are caring for those animals. I'm not aware of cliques, per se, and I'm certain that there's obviously interpersonal challenges, just like every workplace. Because of the high-stress environment, again, I'm not trying to diminish the high-stress on the animals, it is extremely high-stress on them, but our partners, both some that are here, but then is also shared with us, it is, it's stressful on them and the animals that they're caring for as well. So we are definitely committed to having an improved environment for the animals and for our staff, and we coordinate and meet monthly with our staff with all-hands meetings and have conversations about improving that as well.
Thank you. Can you talk a little bit about the TNR program? Has that been reinstated? I know it was suspended for a while.
It was suspended for a while, and it started up slowly at the beginning of this calendar year with the hiring of our third veterinarian just three weeks ago. The request I've asked for from staff as well, does that look like in terms of reinvigorating that? Because it's not just, it's TNR for both the trappers who participate, but also for a possibility of low-cost spay and neutering that would be really important to our community in conjunction with our contractual services with veterinarians to help participate with that as well. So I'm expecting to have in the next month or so from staff, and time for Joe to take a look at it as well, what that looks like for the 2024 cycle as we wind down on the kind of busy kitten season now, that's winding down, not done, that as, before it picks up next spring, what that robust plan is that we can be implementing in the turn of the calendar year.
Okay, thank you. I, I appreciate that. I know that we, I just personally get a fair number of, it seems like every neighborhood has one house that has a very large number of unfixed cats that they feed, and then, as you know, I mean, there's just multiple litters of kittens that kind of just really roam the neighborhood. We've got one in our neighborhood that's a block away from my house. I know of multiples in, in District 6 where people are really concerned about, about that issue with, with a neighbor. So I, I can't stress enough, and I think that the TNR program is, is really important, and getting that to be running well and, and efficiently is essential to having smooth operations at Animal Care and Services, but also just for quality of life issues for both the animals and the residents.
We agree, and we think that there's, we need to build expectations about what the volume and capacity of our ability to deliver at the shelter, plus with our partners and with, with our contractual services, but then what the expectations and pressures are on the community from private veterinarians raising prices so much in terms of their ability to get, which they naturally might be getting resources there. There's pressures on multiple fronts on this, and we will be sharing some in December as well in terms of what we're seeing in this environment.
Yeah, thank you. I do know as well that, I, I know that it's very stressful for the, the shelter vets, but it's, I, I know of a couple of young vets, well, maybe not young, my age vets, who have retired and, and moved on because of the stressful nature of their, of their job. So I am cognizant of the fact that that is a, a challenging profession right now as well. So if there's anything that we can do about, I don't know what we could do about that, but I know that that's exacerbating our issues. I'm hoping Vice Mayor is okay with me moving, moving the recommendation. I did want to ask to include a little bit more, when it, when, when the direction on number six is for community outreach regarding SJACS services, I would also ask for an assessment of the, the communication and the partnership with stakeholders to be, to be included of that, and I don't know if that's only on six, or if it's also, I would also add, I guess for 1B, that the communication and, it's not just engagement, but partnership with stakeholders, volunteer organizations, rescue organizations, foster organizations, et cetera, be included in your assessment, Joe. So that's my sort of amendments to what's here.
And I'm fine with that. I think that makes sense.
So you second?
Yes, I second that.
Thank you.
All right, we have a motion to second. Councilmember Jimenez, did you still want to ask some questions?
Yeah, just, first, I want to thank folks from the community, you know, students. I know we've been, I've been the recipient of many, 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 many emails in communication, and I think my team recently met with some of you. And so I am supportive of the, of the motion. I'll be voting in favor of it. I did, I did have some questions, and we know that audits obviously take some time, so I didn't know that there was one, I think, done in 2022, you said, Matt. It's the external audit, right, that we're going to be presented with, I guess, at the end of the year, which, curious to hear. What I'm curious about is audits take a little while. You know, this one was the external audit 2022, it's coming back then of this year. Whatever you do, Joe, is going to take a little while, it's going to come back later. And so what I'm curious about is, I'm wondering, Matt, if you can talk a little bit about what your department, what you're doing in the immediate future to address some of the things, and, and I'll just recite just a few of the things that we've heard, just to recite them, I'm not suggesting this is in fact happening, because I know we haven't met and I haven't asked you these questions to get the city's side or version of this, so I just wanted to premise what I'm about to say with that. But we've gotten expressions of concern related to animals not being fed, animals not receiving proper medical care, and animals being neglected, and I'm wondering if, if there's anything that, you know, you think we should know as it relates to maybe what's been done in the past, because I know even the city manager did some, some things in the city budget, which I supported, I took a tour of the Animal Care Center. But just wondering if you can touch on that a little bit to alleviate some of the concerns, or probably just clear up some, some things.
Okay, two things, I think. First, just out of clarity, what we're bringing back in December, in December, we're bringing our annual report, which is looking at last fiscal year's performance at the shelter. We will include in that report how we've gotten through the Matties Fund recommendations in terms of that external audit. That will be, so just out of clarity, we're not reporting out on the Matties Fund in December. What we're doing is we're doing our annual report, and in that annual report, we'll provide a status update in terms of how we're progressing through those recommendations. That's, that's one piece of it, and that's the, you just made a comment, I just want to make sure that we're not reporting out in December on the Matties Fund audit. We have agreed with the audit, we've said we're implementing many of the recommendations in there, we're giving a status update as, to how we're progressing as part of our annual report.
Okay. So, so at, as part of the annual report that's going to come at the, just to make sure I understood.
Correct.
As part of the annual report's coming to us at the end of the year, you're going to include in that report how you're addressing some of the?
Correct, so how we're addressing some of the recommendations that came out of the Matties Fund recommendation, that audit. In addition to, we'll be addressing, continuing to address all the, the concerns that come up from the community and from our partners. Like you, I get many emails. I respond to every single email that I get from both, both the students, from our, the constituents, from anybody. I've met with dozens of people as well to get their feedback and ideas and recommendations. I will continue to take those meetings, to hear from them about their experiences, so I can build that, so we can make improvements. We have continued to make improvements, both in line with the Matties Fund recommendations. Additionally, in late, late 2022, the Association of Shelter Veterinarians came up with guidelines for the standards of care of animal shelters. They do this every few years or so, and so we're also implementing those new guidelines as well to make sure our shelter operations are as best we can in line with those guidelines. And so simultaneously, we're implementing the recommendations from the Matties Fund report and from those shelter guidelines that came out of the Veterinary, Veterinarians Association. Continuing to make improvements, we're hearing feedback, we're attempting to improve both our staffing levels, which we are. Had interviews today for a comms person that will fill a void that we have there. We have veterinarians that are moving on, joining the team and improving our contractual services. Continuing to approve, welcome to hear back from the community, their experience. We, everyone is very passionate about our animals. Our staff is very passionate. They care tremendously for our animals, as do our partners in the community. We feel the, the pain and anguish that they feel, and our staff is just as passionate, and we endeavor to do better every single day that we're working there.
So, so just so I understand, the first part of your, your comments was related to the, I, I thought I heard it referred to as the external audit. So, and I have to, admittedly, for everyone here, I haven't been following this issue as closely as I follow other issues, and so, so I apologize if I don't, but, but when was that external audit done? Was that the one that was mentioned, 2022?
Yeah, so it was, Joe has a copy of it here. It was provided by this, this company, this, I don't know if it's a firm or entity, it's Matties Million Pet Challenge, and they provide, they bring in veterinarians that come in and review our operations and provide recommendations. It was provided to us, the final version, in July 2022. We reviewed those. We reviewed those things, provided an information memorandum to the city council. I think it's September of that year after we had an assessment of those recommendations. And so we, we are implementing those things ongoing. Some are super easy to do, some are very lengthy. You need to change the physical plant to make it happen and so forth.
So this fall, this, at the end of this year, you're going to be reporting out in the annual report in addition to touching on where you are with some of those recommendations that came from the external?
Correct, yeah. We have general statistics that we will be presenting out like we typically would. In addition to, we'll provide a status update in terms of how we're, how we're performing against the recommendations and those implementations.
Okay, so I guess what I'm, I'm trying, I, I guess, for someone that hasn't been following the issue all that closely, I'm trying to understand what exactly is happening. And, and I'm not talking about like what's happening at the shelter or not happening at the shelter, but just genuinely, it, it seems like the advocates or the folks that are passionate about this topic, protecting our animals and things of that nature, see this happening. And I'm wondering if the department, the city sees it the same way? We see it uniquely differently? Or we, or I feel like there's just, the, the communication is, is challenged for whatever reason. And I'm trying to sort of ferret out exactly why that is. If, 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 as an example, and I hate to put you on the spot, if, as an example, what my office has been told, animals not being fed, animals not receiving proper medical care. I, I guess I'm trying to understand if, do, do we as a city, or do you at his department say, yes, in fact, that is happening? We have some challenges there, we're working to fix it? Or are we saying it's absolutely not happening? There's a misunderstanding, there's lack of clarity? I'm trying to understand.
So there's many topics that you've shared here. And one of which is, so do I believe that animals are fed every single day? I do, do believe that they are. Our understanding is we take measurements, we get notes about how many animal feedings happen every single day. We get, we take, we are, just in the last year, we started gathering the data for reporting purposes of animals, dogs getting walked in and out of the kennels every single day that can be walked and so forth. Do I believe that animals are not being fed? I do not have any information that makes me believe that animals are not being fed in the shelter. And so, number one. So if I, we'd have to go through each individual one. And so in terms of, do I believe that animals are getting proper medical care? I believe they are, but it's also some of these things, to what end and to what extent and what should we be doing? There, there gets a gray area that people could have a different level of interpretation. And so, and because there is a massive volume of animals that come through the shelter. Our building was built for 450 animals, as I understand it, and it, in June, we had 950 animals in the shelter. That wasn't a static number. That week, we had 350 animals come into the shelter and 350 animals go out of the shelter in the single week. It's a massive turnover, and so there's lots of moving parts there. Are, the people here are a large part of saving many of those animals. San Jose Animal Shelter is a bridge to hopefully a live outcome. We strive to be that bridge. What is that next bridge? Where does this animal go? Some are to adoption, some are through rescues to adoption, some are through rescues for intense medical care, and whatever. And so there's lots, and some are traded off to, we have many partners that are, we transfer to other groups, like the HSSV, the Humane Society of Silicon Valley, is another massive partner of ours. And so we, we are a bridge to whatever that hopefully live outcome. And so many times, that's, that we're trying to find that bridge. Do we find it? Is, is every bridge sturdy as we'd like it to be? Or some of the bridges rickety, some of them are?
Right, okay. And then the, the, the recommendations your team has been working on from the external audit, you know, you're going to present to us at the end of the year. Do you expect that some of that worked towards achieving some of those recommendations? Are going to address some of the concerns you've heard about from the community or?
Yes, I would hope so. And, and I would hope that the community will continue to voice their, their ideas and thoughts of what they see and provide us information, their feedback, and we will continue to act and continue to improve. I hear and read every single email and every concern that's brought up, or I listen to them. We do, we care deeply, yes.
And I've seen some of your responses, so I, I know you do. I very much appreciate that. I, I would just end with this, I'm supportive of the motion. It seems to me that as, with most, most issues that we deal with, the truth, the reality sort of lies somewhere in the middle. And, and, and I look forward to getting a little bit more clarity with Joe's work and with the presentation of the, the extent to which we've achieved some of the recommendations that we've agreed to from the external audit and see where we are. And appreciate the fact that the, the folks continue to advocate for, you know, having three dogs of my own. I understand that I, I am their voice. And so I appreciate what you do, but I also recognize that this is a very fluid sort of, you know, we're, we're trying to, it seems like we're trying to rebuild the plane and improve it and make sure it flies well while it's in the sky. And, and it, it's challenging. And so I, I thank you, Matt, for all your, you, you and your team's efforts and appreciate that. Thank you.
All right, thank you. I support, I'm supportive of the motion too. And in fact, last year, I think we did ask, my office asked for an audit on some of these items, not on all of them. In fact, one that was particularly interesting to me was whether or not the cities we contract with are paying enough for the services that, that we're providing. Because we're supposed to take animals from cities, not just San Jose, but from any animal that's brought in, whether it's from Milpitas or other cities are supposed to come to our shelter. And I, I was looking for an audit that tells us, are we actually cost recovering the service we're providing for others? And so I'm glad we'll be doing that as part of this audit. You know, there were other things that were said that I think I, I agree with a lot of the comments. Obviously, I'm, we've done some things to improve the shelter in the last year, adding our overnight staffing so that we can care for the animals 24 hours a day, which I think is important, was a, was a great upgrade. And we'll see how that improves some of the care. We also had a, we're in a real bad situation with a shortage of veterinarians last year. We only had one full-time veterinarian, and that, I think, made it very difficult. And I'm glad to hear we've now got our third vet on site. My daughter is studying to be a veterinarian, and we were just learning. She's not quite ready for that, but we're just learning the stress level of veterinarians. I mean, the, what I've, what I'm reading, veterinarians have one of the highest suicide rates of any career, and it's because of the stress of dealing with the loss, the, the stress of caring for the animals. And because there's such a shortage of veterinarians, it makes it really hard to, to operate their businesses and, and operate in these environments. So I, I do appreciate the work that our veterinarians do, and hopefully we'll be able to get more. The other, the other thing is, oh, the trap, tap, TNR is very important. You know, I think we all have the houses that Councilmember Davis was mentioning. And not just that, but stray cats in a lot of neighborhoods that are a big issue. And I think having a more accessible, thorough TNR program will, will start to make a difference. And I think that we are catching up from the fact that that program didn't exist for a while, and we were, we were losing, getting, losing our handle on the problem out in the neighborhoods. And so hopefully that will make a difference as well. Anyway, I'm happy to support the motion, and unless there's any other comments, we'll move to a vote. All right, the motion carries five zero. So now we'll go to open forum.
Gail?
Good afternoon. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Hey, so I had texted most of the council people, most of the council on this Rules Committee today to their staff, and hopefully they reported it to you. What I'm seeing out there, and if you saw this posting, what is happening now? The city is posting to abate on one side. The Caltrans is posting to abate on the other side, and there are two different dates. The unhoused have no clue what date they're being posted. Then they come in and their stuff is taken. I know on Waz, Lower Waz, as we called it, one side was Caltrans, the other side was the city. But two different postings is not good. You know, people are in stress mode right now because they're being abated. And then you go, well, what, what's the date? One person, I was over at the Adobe site, and that's where I saw the posting. Well, I did see it at Lower Waz, but please, somebody check into this and look into this. It doesn't make sense to have two separate postings at two separate dates. One today and one in the three days. And nobody knows what date they're being posted. So I'm hope, somebody takes this upon themselves to look into it, ask the city what they're thinking, and how this can be rectified to make abatements, which is going on now, all week they've been abating, a little easier, you know? I, I don't know why we're abating it. It seems ridiculous. We've abated at least six sites in the last two weeks, Caltrans has. And then they have these posting signs. So please, somebody look into this and let's get this taken care of. Thank you so much.
Blair?
Hi, Blair Beifrin. I think it was decided at Rules in Open Government, October 4th, that item 4.1, Public Comment, at the October 17th, San Jose City Council meeting will be limited to one minute, and overall public comment on the item will be limited to 30 minutes. Can I make the suggestion to continue to allow public comment for item 4.1 at the end of the city council meeting at open forum time? There will probably not be as many people remaining to speak on item 4.1 at the end of the meeting, but offering continued public comment at, for the item at open forum time is an important goodwill gesture. And that one minute each public comment for item 4.1 and regular public comment at open forum time may take only 10 to 15 minutes, or perhaps not much longer than 30 to 45 minutes. The end of a city council meeting in open forum is a time of less pressure, and that city council should be available to listen if people will still want to have their voices heard on item 4.1. I hope San Jose can consider VTA practices and how they sometimes have an open forum at both the beginning and end of a VTA Board of Directors' public meeting if needed. With that said, for as many people who may want to speak at the upcoming 4.1 item, Silicon Valley, debug, and others, people of San Jose did a really good job on item 4.1, October 3rd, and seem to have some good answers that can very much help the current jail recidivism ideas of Mayor Mahan and SDP, SDPD, SJPD. I hope debug and everyday community will want to talk to Mayor Han, Mahan's office and city government departments and the SDA Police Oversight Group efforts led by, sometimes led by Pancha Guevara, with the ideas and efforts to address this issue. I think there may be some who will be interested. We may be at a time of good human rights, health, and human services, and reimagine is how to better address simply more and more police surveillance and data collection technology.
We're going to allow some in-person speakers to speak. If you would like to speak, please come down, and you can line up on the stairs. The first person down can come to the podium. Just as a reminder, open forum is for items related to city business, but not on the agenda.
Hi, everyone. I'm glad you guys could make it to this hearing. I'm Andrea Leo, and I live in District Seven. My teacher, Ms. Reisig, has been an incredible help with educating us about the harsh conditions of the San Jose shelter and what the animals have been through. Today, I want to talk about Linguini's story. Linguini was ten and dehydrated as he was put up for adoption. By Friday, August 11, two days after his surgery, many volunteers were concerned for Linguini's health, and those concerns were in address. By Monday, he wasn't seen by the vet, and Tuesday, he was put up for adoption. He was four months old and weighed only one ounce, one pound and 12 ounces. He was emasculated. His caregiver rushed him to the vet where blood transfusion saved his life. Because they didn't take proper care of Linguini, he has to be cared for, and he has a feeding tube. I am here today because I don't want any animals of the shelter to go through what Linguini went through. No animal deserves this, and since they can't speak for themselves, I am here with my fellow peers and Ms. Reisig to be their voice. Thank you.
Thank you, next speaker.
Hi, my name is Cassidy. I live in District Seven, and I'm here from Annapul, from the YB Club Animal Pack. I'm here with my fellow club members and teacher, Ms. Reisig. Animal safety and animal rights are something I'm really passionate about because I don't think we should be looking over the atrocities that are occurring to animals, not just in the shelter, out in public. I live in District Seven, and I've seen carcasses of animals all over District Seven, and I've seen it near high school, the High School Year Babana. I have seen so many cats and animals who are harmed and are not getting proper attention, roaming the streets near schools, near an elementary school. That could, these animals aren't being treated, and they could potentially traumatize and scar young children who don't know better. I think it's really sad that animals like Lola don't get a voice. Lola had a chance to live. She just had arthritis. It's treatable. With a proper care, she could have been in somebody's, um, forever dog, or dog, and had her forever home. However, the San Jose shelter couldn't wait for 15 minutes for a rescue to arrive. That's unacceptable, in my opinion, and it shows negligence. In 15 minutes, you could have been walking another dog. You could have been doing anything else. And it's really heartbreaking to know that Lola was a, was a healthy dog. Regardless of her arthritis, she had a fighting chance and didn't.
Thank you, next speaker.
Hello. My name is Luan Chong from YB Animal Pack, and I live in District Seven. I have visited most animal shelter in San Jose, and it's, most of them are, sorry. According to Cowgirl's story, is that a bulldog got euthanized because she was locked for like one year in the cage, and then she was, she got released. She accidentally bite this one kid, and that's why she got euthanized. I don't think it's fair to euthanize her because she is stressed for all those days in the cages. She needs justice. And so to other dogs and cat, like Linguini, Cowgirl, Lola, they don't deserve to be euthanized, just like us. We don't believe, we don't, uh, I don't, I believe that we don't need to be died for one causes or anything at all. Thank you.
Thank you, and back to the committee.
All right, well, thank you. I'm, I'm going to use my one moment of personal privilege to adjourn this meeting in reflection of the tragic and horrific events in Israel and Gaza. As we mourn the loss of innocent lives and hope for better days of peace to come, let us continue to dedicate ourselves to making San Jose a safe and inclusive community for all. And with that, we will adjourn at 3:02 PM.